I'm gonna call this public hearing to order. In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Fleer, Barney, and Cassiola, as well as Solicitor Gretchen Moore and Township Engineer Dan Dizeroth. Please stand if you intend to speak at all this meeting so that you can be sworn in. Even if you think you, there's any chance at all that you might be, it doesn't hurt to be sworn in and then not speak. Public, this is a public hearing to consider the rezoning application 2021-0033 filed by Miranda Homes for property on Silver Creek Lane, McDonald, PA, and the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Tax parcel ID 14007000001900 and 14007000001901 and 14007000001902. The proposed change in zoning designation is from R1 Low Density Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential to accommodate a planned residential development. This public hearing was duly advertised on March 9th and March 14th, 2022. Are you here, you ready to present? Thank you.
I want to mention something. That part about it to accommodate the planned residential development, that really isn't a part of, is rezoning change, and it really shouldn't be in there. That's almost implying it's a condition, that's, that's the plan, and it's, it, it isn't, this is just rezoning. It's a whole separate process to go through, to apply for a planned residential development.
Yeah, so that's a fair point, Tom, and, and you are all here tonight for the rezoning portion only.
Right.
And obviously, that rezoning would not be contingent upon them, you know, submitting an additional application for a PRD, although I think you're telling us already that's your intention.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for holding this public hearing, and appreciate the audience that came in. You're familiar with this presentation, as I did do it a few weeks ago, but I'd like to present.
Oh, sorry. Your name. Your name for the record.
Michael Seedor, Land Manager with Miranda Homes. But I just wanted to do this presentation as a refresher to the board, as well as inform the audience of, of our intentions and why we are requesting this rezoning. So to, to jump right into it, the, the community will be Silver Creek. What we, as mentioned, we will requesting an R2 rezoning to utilize the PRD. So my name again is Michael Seedor with Miranda Homes. I also have Josh Hedo with David E. Wooster and Associates, who is our traffic consultants. So to start off, the subject properties in Cecil Township on the zoning district map are highlighted. It is currently zoned R1, which is low density. Our request is to rezone it to R2, which is medium density. In the R2, a PRD is, is allowed. The total property is 138 acres, and it fronts on Rising Road. So the, the proposed rezoning, the argument is kind of twofold. One, one is based on the current comprehensive plan that you have, as well as the proposed but not approved comprehensive plan that, that has been put a lot of time and energy into from the township. So I just want to touch on that as well. So the current comprehensive plan kind of states that an R1 zoning is for properties that do not have public utilities, specifically sewers. The R2 is more designed for properties that currently or will soon to be having public sewers. These properties, at this moment, do have all public utilities available to them, and that coincides with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. Two rezoned properties that have those, those features available to them. Moving forward to the future comprehensive plan and proposed comprehensive plan, this kind of falls in with what the vision of the township is based on that proposed plan. The, the property, the subject properties, assuming that it does get approved, would be in a mixed use where a PRD is allowed. And to, and to go into that, that is the future land use map. Zoom in, you can see that it is in the mixed use, abutting medium density residential. So the zoning requirements, based on the R1 clusters, what we originally came into, the PRD in an R2, what is proposed and what is allowed. We had some discussion last time, so here, the density in an R1 cluster, we could have had 277 units. All the bulk requirements were met, however, as I mentioned previously, the vision was, was not achieved there of what a cluster subdivision should look like. If you look into R2 PRD, you know, maximum, as well as proposed, and I do want to mention that the 1,100 units is the allowable requirements. The topography of the site, among other things, wouldn't allow that. It's closer to the 236 units, which is what they're proposing in the plan. Some of the benefits of PRD opposed to like a straight zoning of R1 is it's more compact development. The infrastructure is smaller, the maintenance is less, there's less, there's less areas that are disturbed, more dedicated open space, and we preserve some of the natural features, and there are streams and wooded slopes on, on these properties. So we've tried to preserve that as much as possible utilizing the PRD. So to get, dive into the actual properties that are in subject, this is the existing topography of, of the properties. The darker grayed areas are steeper slopes, the whiter areas are more flat, and you can see this more in here where the red is the steeper slopes. The, the black outline is the limit of disturbance for the, the subdivision, and you can see we're, we're staying away from all the steep slopes as much as possible and preserving them. So here is the actual proposed plan. This will be done in multiple phases. Again, it's approximately 236 units. We are staying away from the majority of the streams and wetlands, opposed to two crossings. There will be one entrance, three stormwater basements. We propose sidewalks throughout the community on both sides. Millbuck Cluster at the, closer to the entrance. We would have an emergency access, which I have a slide to, to show that. And again, all proposed utilities are available on site. So with the open space and buffering, with the PRD, the, there's supposed to be a 50-foot wide buffer, which we will have, that will be owned and maintained by the HOA, as well as at the top, all of the green is open space that will be undisturbed in its purport duty. This will, again, will be owned by the future HOA and remain undisturbed. So moving forward, the emergency and secondary access, we were able to slot in an emergency access that will filter out onto Creedmore Road. It is, it is rather steep, but it's within the requirements, and it does allow a secondary access. In addition to that emergency access, we're proposing to widening the entrance to the first intersection to 30 feet. That's essentially three, three lanes wide to add any more, you know, add, add more to it if, if an emergency does arise, or if there's any blocking a portion of the road. Stormwater control, there will be three basins that will control all of the runoff that happens on the site. It will all be funneled into these basins and then, and then trickled off, off-site. You know, with, with these basins, it typically does reduce any, any current issues on-site with, with flooding and with runoff, so, and this will be done to the township, the DEP, and the Washington County Conservation District requirements and regulations. The traffic discussion, I have Josh here. I'm just gonna run through the basics of it real quick, and then if we have follow-up questions afterwards, we're, we're all ears to answer what we can. So as we discussed previously, there was multiple intersection studied, mainly the intersection for the Southern Beltway and the entrance to the subdivision, as well as on Rising to Route 50. Another consideration that was done, and we do have a study that was provided to the township about the, the overpass of the railroad, and that was studied as well. One thing that did happen since the last time I was here is that the traffic impact study that was submitted to PennDOT was approved. So the, the traffic impact study was approved, and the caveat to that was that there were, it showed no improvements to, to any, any intersections, and that was approved by PennDOT. So just to give a sample building evaluations of what we would be building there, what Miranda Homes would be building is, you know, a home size between 1,800 and 3,200 square feet, you know, depending on, on what prices do in the next few years, we're looking at the low 400s to mid 500 range for Cecil Township. So that, that's the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have any traffic-specific questions, Josh is here to answer them as well.
He showed 15-foot side, George.
15-foot, whatever, whatever.
It was on his chart, it showed 15-foot. Side, George, setback, 15-foot.
That's the R1 cluster. The, R2 PRD is, is 10-foot. Proposed on the right column.
So you're gonna build a house like 45-foot wide?
So, yeah, that would, that's correct. And we, we have products to do that. The majority of our products are 40-feet wide. We do have some that go all the way up to 56-feet wide, but that is our Presidential Series, and those are for, obviously, much larger lots.
Back to that emergency road. How much of a problem would that be to make it that 24-foot wide instead of 15?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Could you repeat that? I didn't hear.
The, the emergency road.
Can you do me a favor, Ron? Can you talk into your microphone, too?
The emergency road. I thought you said at one time it would be 15-foot wide?
Yes, that's what is proposed.
What would be a problem to make it that 24-foot wide, like all the other streets? I know it's emergency, but to make it 24-foot wide?
Typically, emergency access, and I, I can't say for certain that in your ordinances that it is 15-feet wide, but we typically, that's the standard. Based on the grade of this, I'm not sure if a 20-foot wide emergency access could be achieved. I can't, I can't speak on the, the civil engineering aspect of that, but if it can be achieved, that's something I can look into, we most certainly would. That, that would not be an issue.
You said the traffic study was approved by PennDOT?
Yes.
I mean, we had discussion, I think this board and the residents know the safety issue there at Route 50 and Rising Road, so where are we at with the traffic study? Nothing is going to change, is?
So the way, with the traffic study, and Josh can speak more on this, is there's certain specifications and requirements that you have to meet for improvements or non-improvements, and, and there's multiple levels to it. What, what the data shows is that no improvements are needed. I, I fully understand the concerns of, of the board, as well as the town, as well as the citizens of this community, and as I mentioned previously, we would, Miranda Homes is committed to putting a voluntary impact fee in place that can be, you know, negotiated, that can be put on as a condition to the PRD in and of itself.
Right, but this is a rezoning hearing, so when, we wouldn't discuss that right now. Rezoning would be separate from the PRD.
Absolutely, and I, I just want to be on record that Miranda is willing to do that, but I understand that, that would be a condition of the PRD, in the assumption that this is reserved.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, right now, we're aware, there is a problem down there, and it's not your problem. It's PennDOT changed the lanes and everything down there. It was always right lane ends, nowadays changes to left lane ends.
Which it doesn't. It said, the sign says, "Left lane ends, merge right," but the right lane ends.
I mean, you'd have to drive in front of somebody that's come, going straight through.
I understand, and, I mean, that, that's a, an issue that you're dealing with, with now. You know, I, I can't speak on that, I'm, I'm, you know.
Right.
If you feel like complaining, though, we'd appreciate that, because they're not listening to us right now. And we get messages daily about near accidents there.
Sure, sure.
Well, they said they have their engineer look at it. I just, I just want to go over to grade school and get somebody to look at it. You see, it's so crazy.
Josh, would you like to speak on, on this?
Sure. Josh Hedo, David Wooster and Associates. We can certainly ask the question as well.
Yeah.
How recently did that, did that change?
Within the past month. So they literally just put signs up. They didn't do any marking on the pavement, no notification, nothing. After probably 50 years of it being, "The right lane ends, merge left," all of a sudden they threw up a sign that says, "Left lane ends, merge right." So I got a text message today from somebody who was like, "My wife got flipped off and my daughter got run off the road because there's no warning, and everybody who's lived around here their, their whole life is used to the other way."
Right. We'd certainly be happy to ask on, on your behalf, again.
We would appreciate it.
We may get the same lack of response, but, yeah, it's, it's certainly odd that they would change the signing.
Yeah, because where, where you turn onto Rising Road, like, that right lane really should be a turning lane. It should end, it should be a turning lane onto Rising. Now people, now the signs want people to merge into the right lane, but the left lane continues.
We will, we will pose that question to the department.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
No, they're, they're gonna tell you that they got a lot of complaints from the elevator shop, and I only know of like one accident right there since the new road was put in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. Don't let him tell you that, is what he's saying. And they're also gonna say that there were accidents there. They never once reached out to us, they never once reached out to our police to get confirmation of any of that stuff. They just decided it would be fun to throw up a sign.
Okay, we, we didn't notice an accident history. That was also part of our study, was to pull accident data, and we didn't get it either.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, at the condition that it was, it was fine.
Right.
Before they changed it.
Yeah. One way or the other, it certainly doesn't make sense to have the sign that say one thing and the pavement marking to say another.
Right.
I don't know off the top of my head which one's better, which lane ends, but they certainly shouldn't contradict one another, so.
Yeah, when you're driving, you'll see the left lane continues and the right lane goes on to Rising.
Yeah.
But PennDOT decided the sign would be better in the other direction, so.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that on my way in tonight, but I thought I was crazy, because I was here a month ago, and I didn't think it was that way.
No.
I honestly think that a lot of the traffic leaving this plan will go up and get on a turnpike and get off on 50, so they, they wanted me going through that trestle.
We, we agree. Because, because the, the Beltway is so new, we, we couldn't make an, an accurate estimation as to how much the traffic would go that way relative to going down Rising Road, but certainly would expect, given the, the destinations that people are more or less going to, that a lot of people will actually avoid that underpass and avoid that intersection altogether.
So let me, this is, I should know the answer, because I drive Rising daily, but, so if you do that and take just that short little connection, do you have to pay a toll to go from?
We've been told by the department that you do not.
Okay. It's good to know.
I don't know that that's, as of now, that's the case. I don't know if that's something that could, would ever change, but.
I'm gonna try, I, I live over that way, so I drive Rising three, four, or five times a day. I'm, just out of habit, always come on to 50, but now, I mean, I'll give it a try, see what happens.
You know what I noticed, too? Coming back from the airport, I never, I never normally need my GPS or, or on, in my car, but I had it on one time because I was timing something or mileage or something. It went to, when I got off at the South Fayette area right there, it, it directed me to turn right, to go down towards Rising Road, not left, even the sign that says Cecil to the left, it directed me to go to the right. So, so that's, I mean, it's gonna add more people, I think, from the toll road that, that aren't familiar with it, they're gonna end up going down on Rising.
Possibly, yeah.
Related to your issue, but yes.
One other thing is, I don't know if there's any picture from the church here. Somebody was supposed to come up and speak, the preacher or somebody. They're complaining, which I don't blame them, that tractor trailers are going down to the trestle and can't get under, and backing up into their lot. That has nothing to do with Miranda. They need to talk to the turnpike to put better signage up when the people are coming down, not to go down there and then have to back up into the church.
GPS is probably taking them that way.
That's, that's the first time anything like that has been brought to our attention.
Well, it, it has nothing to do with Miranda, it's not, it's more a turnpike problem, I would think.
Any other questions by the board? Not everybody wants to. Anything else you want to add? Any questions or comments by anyone in the audience? You can step to the microphone, just state your name and address for, oh, sorry. Race there, see who gets there first. No, no, it was fine. You, you'll both get the opportunity. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Nancy Marshall, 45 Tomahawk Claim Lane. I spoke to you all a couple of weeks ago at your regular meeting, but I did have a chance to speak to Reverend John Patterson. He's the minister at the Cecil Alliance Church, and his manse is right beside the church. So he is right there at, at the railway underpass, and he says that at least once a day, a truck can't get through and backs up. Sometimes they're actually so long that they have to back all the way up to the turnpike entrance, because there's no place else big enough for them, for a big truck to turn around. And they all say that their GPS system directs them that way, and they're, so they're not paying any attention to whatever the signs are that the turnpike is putting up, they're paying attention to their GPS, which is leading them down. And those of us who use it all the time are, are just really aware of the fact that if we add another 250 homes, it's just gonna be a really problematic situation.
But I think that they need to call back PennDOT or the turnpike.
I, I understand that there's a different issue that you're addressing. I'm just saying, in terms of the rezoning, you're suggesting adding 250 people, 250 homes with all of those people, many of whom are going to try and go through that underpass.
I mean, to be fair, though, we brought up that concern, the truck concern off the turnpike, 10, 15, 20 times during the building of the turnpike during meetings. I don't want to say it wouldn't be fair, but I think to me, those are separate issues, so I don't want to consider, like, not rezoning a parcel of property over there because of an issue that somebody else is creating or doing. Do you see what I'm saying? So like, if we want to address it with the turnpike and the state, because those are turnpike and state roads, and say, "Hey, we're having all these issues with the truck," I think that's a separate conversation from, from the rezoning of this parcel. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
There, there are ways to get, like, Google Maps to correct routes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
It just has to go through a process, and agencies like the turnpike, I think, are more able to make the, get those changes made than we as individuals are, so maybe that's something we can follow up on, too. That's a good, good point.
Just to quickly add on that, we had noticed that, you know, months ago, you know, it's taking GPS devices and phones and things some time to catch up to the new, to the Beltways, they do with new roads like this. So certainly has been changing and evolving, and, you know, by reporting things like that, you know, we'll look into that, doing that, but it is something that's gonna evolve. It still is a relatively new project, so, given how far it's come in the last couple months, it's, it's something that needs to be ironed out, but I'm sure that that's something that can be accomplished.
If they want to go 50 West, it is a half mile further to go on South Fayette Way and come back this way, exactly almost six tenths of a mile longer, so the GPS normally is shortest route, they're obviously gonna send them to the right, to the Rising Road.
But there should be some sort of notification that comes up that lets them know.
Low clearance ahead or something.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an issue that PennDOT has to work out with the turnpike and get the proper signage posted out there on that road, so these trucks and vehicles don't come down there to that railroad trestle. I mean, there's no township road involved, but we have to reach out to PennDOT with the turnpike, and they have to work it out amongst themselves.
Yeah, truckers will see that T there, to go left toward South Fayette. If there are signs directing them that way, you tell them there's low clearance to the right.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Hello, Aldis, 175 North DePauli Road. The back end of this butts right up against my house. You got about eight houses, is, I don't know. What I'm trying to find out is, can we get a bigger buffer zone?
Can you change this?
The top end of that, the top left-hand side of that plan. Can I move this?
What is the, what is the buffer from your house right now?
Pardon me?
What is the buffer from your house right now?
It, it's 50 right behind it, and 25, as it goes over to the left-hand side of my property, right-hand side looking at it here, is what they say that is.
Could we slide it and get a bigger buffer, or?
I would have to consult the Civil Engineers, Sheffler and Company. If it's feasible, absolutely, that would be no issue.
That, and if, the, the more buffer you can get, the better, and if you can put a double row of pine trees in there or something to grow up, so you can't see these houses.
Seems reasonable. That's all stuff that we can, this is for a rezoning, but that's all stuff that we can negotiate with them if it's rezoned and we go through the PRD process.
Okay.
But we definitely, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I do have about the road also. I don't know if you care about that now or not. We were in conversation with PennDOT also, and I got an email back from them, and they were telling us what they were doing with that, and I told them this plan was going in there, they didn't care. Why wouldn't the left lane go straight through, the right lane end? But they're supposed to be painting this. I got an email from them the other day, they're gonna be painting this when the weather changes.
They've been saying that.
It still don't make sense.
They've been saying that for a month now. I don't know what weather they're waiting for. I feel like they could have, you know, 70 is pretty good.
I addressed this many years ago with them, and they told me, "No, studies need to be done, you can't do this." All I wanted was an arrow painted on the road, and they wouldn't do it. You, you know how much money that's gonna cost? So they wouldn't do it. Now all of a sudden, they just change it like that.
It literally.
Uncomplaint, they said.
It makes no sense. They've had more complaints in opposition of the change than they had in making the change, and they're just digging their heels in and saying, we sent them a letter, I don't know if you saw it, that basically if there's an accident or a fatality, it's on them, because they didn't, they didn't follow the proper procedures, they didn't do a traffic study, they didn't contact the township, they didn't talk to our police, they just put signs up, so.
Somebody's gonna come up there and stop in the left-hand lane to make a right-hand turn, and somebody's gonna trunk them back.
This one. Carashardon 58 North DePauli. I just had a question. Do we have any idea what the cost would be to somehow remediate that underpass area, to make it wider, with more site distance? Do we have any clue, like, what the cost would be to, to do something there to make it better?
So again, like, we can look into that. We do have some ideas, because we've looked at it before, but again, like, not to keep bringing it back, but like, we don't want to mix up a PR, what, what we can do under a PRD and what we're considering under a rezoning.
Sure.
So under a rezoning, we just need to look at the parcel itself. We can't consider, we shouldn't consider other off-site improvements. When we get to the PRD process, we can work with Miranda Homes to say, "Hey, this is something of concern to us, how do we work out how to improve that," or whatever. But tonight, like, that would not be a priority, but we do know.
It's something for the future, and I guess just for residents who are worried about that. It's something that we could, we can do some work in finding a better solution. Whether it's the turnpike's fault, or it's, you know, additional car traffic, there's probably something, right, that we can look into in the future, and whether it's impact fees. And whether it's impact fees or whatever it is that is collected, we can deal with it at a later time, right?
Well, the trestle belongs to the railroad. And I've seen, I don't know if you've heard anything, I've seen people up there surveying. PennDOT was up there surveying. Somebody said the railroad was up there surveying. I mean, if they could do something like they did down in Copper, damn, how much you think that was down there? And there was no trestle going through there.
There's funding out there for doing things. Railroads have money in their budgets to do those types of things from time to time. We just need to check further into it, talk to that railroad, something else we can...
I asked a question, you had mentioned that at a previous meeting, I think, in January. Or someone had asked, "Is there anything?" So I reached out to PennDOT and never did get a response, so.
Shocking. Totally shocking.
Whatever the nature, the nature of whatever they might be doing, I don't know if it's PennDOT or railroad, but we're no closer to knowing what it is, if it's anything, than we were a couple of months ago.
Might be better off to contact the railroad.
They'd be more forthcoming, probably.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if all three got together, the turnpike, PennDOT and railroad, they might be able to do something.
Someone's bound to answer.
Seriously, you know?
Eventually. Any other questions from anybody in the audience? Any other board questions? At this point, this public hearing is closed. We won't take a vote tonight, yeah. The vote will be people meeting. There will be a vote on the rezoning at our April Board of Supervisors meeting, which I don't know, for, whatever the first Monday is. I don't know the date off the top of my head.
April 4th.
Ford, I, we need to have a brief executive session.
Good job.